And to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Votes will be conducted on a voice call rather than roll call unless requested by a member. I've got a couple announcements this evening. This past week, I was lucky enough to be invited to the first annual menorah lighting here in Winona. We had Rabbi's Green, father and son, from Rochester, representing the Southern Minnesota Shabbat. And we had about forty or fifty people there, so that was really neat, and I hope to see that continue for years to come. So we'll call it the first annual menorah lighting in Winona. Tonight, I also have a proclamation. This is kind of a special one. Regarding the Winona Post and their 50th anniversary. City of Winona, Minnesota proclamation, whereas the Winona Post then named the Winona Shopper, was founded by Fran and John Edstrom in 1971. And whereas the Winona Post grew over the 1970s and 1980s to become a full-fledged newspaper with news, events, sports, opinion, and advertising. And whereas Patrick Merrick purchased the Winona Post from Fran Edstrom in 2014, and has maintained and increased the newspaper's high journalistic standards. And whereas the Winona Post is a leading source for local news and advertising for over 21,000 households and 28,000 readers, delivered free of charge to their homes, and has won scores of awards for journalistic excellence. And whereas the Winona Post helps Winona area residents better understand and participate in local democracy. And whereas strong local journalism increases public participation in democracy and strengthens community pride and cohesion. Now, therefore, the City of Winona, Minnesota recognizes and congratulates the Winona Post on 50 years of journalistic excellence and service to the Winona area. It witnessed thereof, I have here on two set my hand and caused a seal of the City of Winona to be affixed on this, the sixth day of December 2021. Patrick Merrick is in attendance. Patrick, would you like to say a few words this evening?
Oh, sure.
I'm sure you would.
I love that kind of talk. Whereas, affixed, great.
Run-on sentences, right?
Works for me. Okay, so 50 years ago, John and Fran Edstrom founded the Winona Shopper, the newspaper that eventually grew to be the Winona Post, the community newspaper that we know today. That the Shopper survived a year in a conservative market with a strong locally-owned newspaper, the Winona Daily News in those days owned by the Whites, is amazing. The fact that the Winona Post is celebrating its 50th anniversary despite years of inflation and recessions through personal tragedy, polarizing controversy, and tense, often brutal corporate chain newspaper competition is astonishing. The Post, the biggest thing, the Post somehow survived me buying the newspaper from Fran Edstrom in 2014. It's amazing. Since I purchased the Post, I felt like a caretaker to the Post's tradition of excellence. However, I did put my stamp on the paper on my first day of ownership. Called the editorial staff together. Chris probably remembers this. They were thrilled. They looked almost as happy as you guys, knowing I was going to give a speech. And I said, it's not long, I promise. And I wasn't long for them either. I said, all, I'm not going to stick my nose in their business. I'm going to be checking on them. But I wanted to operate our newspaper by what I call the Merrick Rule. And it really should be called the Evans Rule, because I learned it from Gary Evans back when I was in journalism class back at St. Mary's when Rock was young. Here's how it goes. When you read a news story in the Winona Post, you should hear both sides of the story presented in a fair way. And when you finish the story, you should have no idea how the reporter felt about it. Now, that doesn't sound too hard, does it? And it's not, shouldn't be revolutionary, but it is. It's not, look at the world we're living in. Look at journalism now. Anyway, I want to thank the City of Winona for this honor. I want to thank the Edstroms for their leadership. And most of all, I want to thank the generations of families in the Winona area for your faithful readership and unwavering support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. And now we will have city manager, or I'm sorry, I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Chad, do you have anything? Sorry.
Mayor and council, a few items. Tonight I handed out a one piece of the 2022 budget, has some highlighted yellow sections if you want to follow along, and I've obviously provided a copy for the Post as well. At the November 15th pre-council meeting, I presented options for reductions within the 2022 budget. I mentioned employee service reductions in the amount of $193,041. At that time, I could not elaborate on specific vacancies or elimination of positions due to personnel, private data. Those issues are now resolved, and I'd like to present positions by department that will not be included in the 2022 budget. It should be noted that these reductions were included in an attentively approved 2020 proposed budget back in August, and also within the $590,000 reductions. In other words, these are cumulative. It should also be noted that the $193,041 includes seasonal part-time staff reductions as well. So with the sheet in front of you, the first yellow line there, and I will go by department. Finance, there'll be one full-time equivalent reduction. Police, there are two full-time equivalent reductions. I will note that we are maintaining 38 officers. These reductions in police are due to the school resource officer and a community service officer. So Tommy, well, Chief Williams is backfilling some of the areas of service for the community service officer with part-time staff. The next item on your list is Public Works. Public Works will see a reduction of two. One in streets, one in tree crew. Community development, the one position reduced, community development specialist. Recreation Department, one reduction. This is recreation coordinator, and I'm suggesting that be for arts and culture. Library, there is one reduction. By title, it's the library associate. Again, Leslie is looking at backfilling those services with part-time staff. So at this time, I'm not recommending that the city continue with a hiring freeze. I just want to make sure that we're clear on, I'm clear on that. Many of the departments will need to advertise positions throughout the year as retirements or resignations occur. However, we'll only advertise for vacant budgeted positions in 2022. Again, we'll evaluate all employee service costs and positions for the 2023 budget. And as always, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. If not, the adoption of the 2022 budget will occur at your next meeting, December 20th. And again, certainly, if you have questions at that time, we can address them.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, one more.
Okay, at this time, Mayor, I'd also like to, I guess, cede the floor to Alicia Lano. She has an important announcement for all of us.
Don't worry, this one's an exciting announcement. The Union Mayor and Council, I am excited to announce that the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission is recommending to the Minnesota State Legislature that the Bluffs Traverse Phase Two project should be the recipient of the legacy grant that we had applied for in July. If the legislature approves the request, which would happen in the spring of '22, the amount awarded would be $403,000. Combine the request of $403,000 with the city's match of $101,000, and we'll have a total Phase Two budget of $504,000. This round of funding will go to trailhead improvements at the west end of Windcrest Drive, near the Cellon Radio Towers, and two new trails in Bluffs Side Park. If you recall, this last year, we were awarded funding for Phase One for $560,000. The City of Winona and the Winona Area Mountain Bikers had supplied a match of $140,000 for a total budget of $700,000. With the addition of Phase Two funding, that will bring us to $963,000 in legacy funding, and a total budget of $1,204,000 for the Bluffs Traverse project thus far. Their grant contracts must go through the DNR, so once those are in place, we hope to begin work in 2022. The Park Rec Department would like to thank Tom Stoa, who is a resident of Winona, and also one of the District Six Commissioners for the GMRPTC. He has been advocating for the Bluffs Traverse project since the beginning, and we owe him many thanks for his support. We'd also like to thank the City Council for your past and current support of this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That is absolutely phenomenal news. I have goosebumps. As you all know, I'm a mountain biker and have been working on that project for many, many years, and I am happy to start seeing it come to fruition, so thank you. Okay, I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander. Idan.
Here.
Porzekowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the license agreement for portable restrooms with Darcy Inc. doing business as Kimmels.
Move to approve the license agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I don't want my gavel tonight.
Item 3.2 is an appointment to the Human Rights Commission of Leon Dixon Jr.
Make a motion to approve the appointment.
I'd second that.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Pam. Any discussion?
I just have a comment.
Please.
I'm just really happy to see so many real well-qualified people signing or wanting to be on our boards and commissions, and especially Dr. Nixon. So, thank you.
Absolutely. His resume is phenomenal, and I think he'll be a great fit for the Human Rights Commission. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Great River Shakespeare Fest, for an event to be held on Sunday, December 12th.
Motion to approve the license.
Second that.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is request for no parking, loading, and unloading zone for East Second Street in, at 60 East Second Street.
Move to approve the attached ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
When do we think that the Dos Amigos Grocery is going to be opening?
Good question. I think a lot of people are looking forward to that.
Okay.
No? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we're all looking forward to it, I think. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.5 is a license agreement request from Bruce and Linda Reed for building a pole shed at 1128 East Fifth Street.
I would motion to direct administration to execute the attached license agreement between the City of Winona and Bruce and Linda Reed.
Second.
Mayor, can I say something quick? I'd like to extend that license premises entire length of the property.
So you'd like to make a motion to do that?
Like to make a motion to do that also.
I'll second that motion if.
Like to make an amendment to that license premise, the entire length of the property.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. We have an amendment by Aaron and a second by George.
Is that okay with the second of the motion? I think Eileen made it.
Yes, that, yes, for, yeah.
Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, do we want to hear from engineering? Just make sure that, see if there's any concern with that.
I think it's a good idea.
Mayor and council, I believe that's the way Mr. Reed actually requested it, and it should have been drawn that way. There was a property line where that was, and I think it got misconstrued that way. So we have no issue with that whatsoever.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you're okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Excellent. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.6 is a sign request from the Main Street Program.
Motion to approve the request. Second that.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.7 is the appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Erin Pearlberg.
Move to approve the appointment.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.8 is to request to accept a donation from Jerry Raditz of $50,000 to be used at the Winona Public Library.
Move to approve accepting that donation.
Second that.
Motion from George, second from Pam. Any discussion?
Think the whole council.
Eileen?
I just wanted to say that I'm so excited about this, and many thanks to Mr. Raditz, because we are very excited for the library. And I'm wondering if Leslie wants to say anything.
Mayor and council, I'm sorry to say Mr. Raditz could not be with us this evening, but on behalf of library staff, we are thrilled to have this generous gift come our way. And he is a longtime patron, spends hours a day in our building, and has really become part of our team library family, as we like to call ourselves. So many, many thanks to him.
Absolutely. That's good. Thank you, Leslie. Any other comments or questions, George?
Yes, I'd just like to personally thank Mr. Raditz. I know he's been involved in professional Major League Baseball as a scout for many years, and where I think we should be pretty proud to have him here in Winona, because he helped scout many professional players that have become very successful in Major League Baseball. So it's good to have him here and thank him for his donation.
Absolutely. Thank you, George. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.9 is the Recreation Alliance of Winona Agreement Report.
City Manager Chad Ubel, you had something to say?
Mayor and council, before Mr. Barnard gets up to present, I just want to remind the council that with more of our recent agreements, the council had asked us several years ago that we put a clause in license agreement, service agreements that extend for a certain term, an annual report, so that the council gets feedback from the licensee in this case. And so just wanted to give you that reminder before Mr. Barnard gives his presentation. We're not expecting, you know, these to be, you know, half-hour presentations, but they are just to give you an idea of what's happening with the agreement, and what kind of work has been done. So just wanted to, want to set that up before we turn it over.
Very good. We have Eric Bernard with the Recreation Alliance of Winona to give us our update.
Thank you, everyone, for allowing us to give a, we'll try to keep it very brief as well. Give you, if you, if anybody has any questions afterwards, we're welcome to answer those. And then in addition, feel free to email any other questions that you have. Since this is our first one, we thought it would be prudent for us to at least lay out what we do, why we created this nonprofit for Winona, and really, our mission is to advocate, develop, support outdoor recreation in the greater Winona region, to improve quality of life and protect our public lands and encourage sustainable economic growth. We, I think many of here have identified that outdoor recreation is one of the biggest untapped economic development opportunities in Winona. We have kind of all of the raw materials to have a huge sustainable outdoor recreation economy here. Many of you have heard my spiel's before, too, that outdoor recreation is the third-largest economy in the United States. It goes healthcare, insurance, outdoor recreation. And if you took the entire automobile industry, and the entire pharmaceutical industry and combined them, it would equal outdoor recreation. It's the $880 billion industry in the United States, and it's sustainable, which is something that we should all value as well. In addition to that, our vision really is to make greater Winona area the premier outdoor recreation destination in the Midwest. Many of us are great cheerleaders for Winona, right? You're on City Council, so you believe in Winona, just like we do as well. And we feel like there's no reason that we should be second best to anybody in this area. So many people in this chamber right here have moved to Winona from other areas because of what we have here as well. Our goals as a nonprofit advocacy group is really to facilitate communication advocacy among all the recreation groups, outdoor recreation groups. So the paddlers, the hikers, the fishermen, the bird watchers, the climbers, all of these groups to be a conduit to work with land managers, who you all, whether or not you want to admit it, are land managers for our public lands in Winona. And so to be that central, a pathway for communication so that things can get done. So there's less roadblocks, really. In addition to that, we really want to project a positive message around outdoor recreation. You know, the idea of that outdoor recreation can lead to conservation sometimes needs some education with folks. And so we'll point out some things that we've been successful with partnering with the city. These public-private partnerships are super valuable and very cost-effective as well. You get a lot of bang for our buck out of these public-private partnerships. With that, just facilitating those partnerships and then supporting the development to increase access to recreational facilities as well. And then the conservation's always at the core. We value our public lands as much as anybody, because it gives us something of value, so we're willing to advocate and fight for those public lands. It's an important resource. Don't mind switching the slide. So we get funding from the city. We've entered into this three-year contract now, and so $6,000 of city funding goes to the Recreation Alliance. We think that is an amazing value, because you get all of, not just those of us who are in here and part of the Recre- Recreation Alliance as far as a board, but all of the volunteers and then all of those user groups as well. So volunteer days are generally pretty successful, and the amount of work that we can put into building trails, sustaining trails, those type of things, and creating support facilities is a great value, and it's a win-win for everybody in that area. So things that we spend that money on is, oh, we need trail tools to be able to make sure that trails, things erode. Things need to be built up, like retaining walls, erosion mitigation, digging trenches, drainage, all that type of stuff needs to happen, and it's all human manpower. And so that's something that we need to spend money on, is that those tools and then the endless battle against the invasives in our bluffs, the buckthorn and the honeysuckle, it's just something that I personally and other folks I know in here and in our community have a personal vendetta against buckthorn. Like, it's not going to beat us. We've also spent money on trying to help with wayfinding. Initially, many of you all have lived here in Winona for a long time, and the Sugarloaf used to be on the south side, and we had to go through private property and actually trespass to be able to go to the Sugarloaf. Increasing wayfinding, we all live here, but we have to look through the lens of if people are going to come to Winona, how can they find these places, right? We know how to get there, but if you don't know this area, we need wayfinding. We need that signage so that people can, one, stay on trail so it doesn't impact area, and then also it's an enjoyable experience for them. We need to have protection for our volunteers. We had a volunteer cleanup at the Sugarloaf Bluff here in the end of October. I think we had around 40 folks that showed up to remove buckthorn and restore prairie and help with trail restoration. So we need to make sure that they have eye protection. They need to have gloves, those type of materials, so that, one, they keep coming back, and we don't have any issues, safety issues. The Winona Ice Park is something as well that we'll talk about a little bit, but the infrastructure for the Winona Ice Park also costs some money, and that's something that will be decreasing in value over the years as that infrastructure is purchased and put into place. And then we need to have insurance as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, having volunteer workdays, and so that money goes to us, having volunteer insurance. If anything were to happen to any volunteers, they would be covered, and it wouldn't come out of their own pocket. Projects that we've worked on, this year, we worked on rebuilding the, kind of the saddle switchback section of the Sugarloaf that was in disrepair. It was eroding away. We were lucky enough to have the Access Fund, which is a national advocacy organization, come to Winona for the fourth time, and that's actually a big deal. The Access Fund only comes to areas that are at least of regional significance, if not national significance. And this is the fourth year that we've had them come here, and this year we had two of their professional trail building teams come here. They come for free. They bring all the tools, they bring all of the expertise, and in addition to that, they did a full week-long training with a couple of our members to teach us how to maintain the trails, so we don't have to rely on bringing others in, so we can start becoming more self-sufficient in managing our own trails. So that was really huge. Graffiti removal, the Sugarloaf, that area, that used to be a broken beer bottle party zone. Now it actually seems like a park. We have graffiti removal, chemicals, and tools, so that as soon as we see graffiti, we can go and remove it right away, so they don't get any satisfaction out of it, and they can move on. And that's been winning. We've been winning in that battle. Trail drainage, another thing is, trails change. We have more and more heavy rain events than ever before, and so being able to deal with that erosion mitigation. So that's just people having to dig in the right places in the right way to make sure our trails stay sustainable. The Ice Park above that prairie, we haven't named that prairie yet, or that part of the bluff, which would be part of the Ice, or the Bluff Traverse, but that is an awesome example of outdoor recreation leading to conservation. The first time I went up to that bluff, I brought my son up there. I think five years ago, we had to have a hand clipper with us to be able to hike through the tunnel of buckthorn. He actually told me that I didn't love them, because we were going on this hike. And so now, when you go up there, you see families hiking up there. It's like a park, that prairie up above the top that was choked out because of the buckthorn has started to actually turn back into a prairie again. And the only reason that's happening is because the city has partnered with user groups to allow recreation in those areas, and we found that that leads to conservation. We're willing to put in time to protect those areas that are important to us. Switch that. Some partnership achievements. So we worked with the city on the Levy Park Boulders, wrote a grant for the two climbing boulders that were put in at Levy Park, and you all had matched funds for the landscaping in that area, around that area there. That's still work and project or progress process, but we were happy to see that MRPA gave the seat of Winona their second award of excellence for that unique park. The Sugarloaf Trail Build was something that was what we really started with. We were really kind of bothered by the fact that we had to trespass, and then many of you have gone up there before, the amount of erosion that was happening on that south side. There's ravines that are eight feet deep into the bluff from people going up, loosening the soil, and it would rain, it would wash away, and it was just a cycle. And so that was one of the first projects that we really embarked on, was to try to find some seed funding for that. Winona Ice Park was the first MRPA award for the City of Winona in 2019 as well. And then every year, we've had a Sugarloaf cleanup and invasive management partnering with the Winona Fire Department. They'll go up in the spring, and they'll burn the buckthorn that we cut, and it's just a never-ending battle. We just can't let up against that buckthorn. So just a quick picture here of what the Sugarloaf Trail at one section looked like. You can see all of the erosion. I can't tell you how many people I have seen fall in that area because of the way the trail was initially built there, with the slope was all wrong, and people would just slip and wipe out there. So what we did is, we came in, we put in in-ground, there's actually retaining walls built, there's stairs built. We changed the angle. We elongated that switchback so that a more diverse population, it's more accessible for folks to be able to hike that, and put in two other retaining walls and transition areas in that as well. So it's just another example of what we're getting for that investment with this partnership as well. The Winona Ice Park is now the second-largest ice park in the country. There is literally thousands of volunteer hours that go into creating this unique structure. And I have some, some survey results, too, as well. We have over 2,000 feet of infrastructure that gets put out by volunteers every year, and people travel now from all around the country to come to this place. Like, why would somebody come from Texas to Winona, Minnesota in February? Why would they buy a plane ticket to fly into La Crosse and spend a week here? Maybe the marina? Maybe the Marine Art Museum? I'm open to other ideas of why else they would come here. They fly here now from Texas, from St. Louis, from Chicago, every weekend, Chicago, pretty much, Milwaukee, because of this amenity. So we're, we're increasing tourism as well and we're getting national recognition for this feature. Some, some information from our parks survey that we do every year, we put it out to participants just to not just bury you with some data, but just to show you some of these, this really revealing information. First, average age, fifty-five percent nineteen to thirty-nine years old. Forty-four percent of the people who are climbing at the ice park are over forty. Distance traveled, fourteen percent travel fifty-one to a hundred miles, but thirty-five percent a hundred to a hundred and ninety-nine miles, thirty-six percent travel over two hundred miles, fifty-seven percent stay the night in Winona at Airbnbs and in lodging. Fifty-five percent of that fifty-seven percent spend multiple nights in Winona. Let's see, sixty percent have been ice climbing for at least four years. Level of education, not that that's a measurement of climbers' intelligence because it's not. We generally have pretty small brains, but it is a measurement of income generally. Fifty-four percent of the folks who visit the Winona Ice Park have at least an undergraduate degree. Twenty-nine percent have a graduate degree or higher. Average household income of our visitors, forty-six percent are fifty to a hundred thousand, seventeen percent a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, and twenty percent are a hundred and fifty thousand and over. Requested improvements from our visitors, obviously were more ice, more benches, and they would like to see restroom facilities or wag bag stands. Wag bags are essentially bags that you can carry out your human waste and put into a bag. So something that we are doing with that and to be proactive is that we will, we have purchased three hundred wag bags that will be at the ice park this year for visitors to reduce human waste and impact on that as well. As we'll see where if we get to a porta potty up there or not. Some anecdotal information, last year we had two separate unrelated groups who traveled from Texas and they chose to come here instead of Colorado on their annual trip. They usually went to Yuray, Colorado, which is the largest ice park in the country. They chose to come here because it was cheaper, it was more accessible. And just to do things in town with lodging and go out to eat was cheaper as well. We had groups who came from St. Louis for six days from Winona. We had two separate unrelated groups from Fargo, North Dakota that came here as well. So you can switch to the last one. So for our goals, we're always looking to the future. We are no, by no means want to be, we're not just like the climber group. The Winona Ice Park is an awesome resource for all of us. It's a great resource for us as a nonprofit for fundraising and advocacy work. But things that we want to work on, this year we will be doing our Luminary Snowshoe Event in February, which was something we did two years ago at Holzinger Lodge. We're going to, we want, would like to work to establish an ADA accessible paddling put-in at Prairie Island and clean up that shoreline for a better put-in. We'd like to work more on invasive removal, prairie restoration at the Sugarloaf Park, and increase accessibility, sustainability and development of our local trails. And then to continue to work with city staff to develop more support facilities for outdoor rec. So.
Any questions for?
I did, Mayor, excuse me, Eric, thank you very much. It's incredible the amount of work you guys have done and stuff. I've had the question come to me multiple times now. I know you're an advocacy for outdoor recreation. Does that include OHV, UTV, ATV, snowmobiling groups? I didn't see anything in, in your post, but I've had that question asked me quite a bit lately. And so I'm just wondering, do you, are you, would you work with those groups? Or would you be the person that would direct those people that ask that question to speak to?
I mean, we're new-ish. We've only been around for four years, so we've been just kind of digging in. But I mean, I just went and got my first snowmobile yesterday.
Yeah, good. But I mean, are you comfortable with that? If, if somebody asks me that, I can say.
There'd be a learning curve because I don't think we're not the experts yet on that area. But as far as we do have the relationships, and that was one of our goals of starting this, was that rather than all these user groups coming to city staff who already have a ton on their plate and getting all these questions that if they come to us and we already have, we have a standing meeting with the city. So that's something that could be put on the docket and a person who's a representative from that group could come to that meeting. And so it was really trying to be more efficient to get things done because that's really our goal is we want to get things done. And so.
And you've accomplished so much in your infancy, it's amazing. I mean, it really truly is.
So, and you know, that user group is huge and it's important across the country not to take up a ton of your time. But when we look at land advocacy, land advocacy, the ATV ORV group, they've saved a lot of public lands that like hikers and climbers use as well. They're well organized, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Steve?
I, I just want to sincerely thank you. What, what a big deal, what a big win this is. This is huge. In my work, in my, in my career, I meet a lot of new people that, that come into the community and, and especially the younger people. So I'm, so I'm going to say, sorry, but I'm going to say underage forty. Almost, I asked them, what, what brings you? I've got a set of questions. What, what brings you to Winona? What are you, what are you doing here? And then more, more than just chubby, what is it? It's nine times out of ten recreational opportunities get, gets mentioned in the top one or two things that they, that they mention. In the background reading that I've done, the importance of, of recreation and outdoor recreation continues to move up the ladder as, as far as people making their choices of moving and, and joining our community. Thank you so much and I'm, I'm glad we can partner with, with you guys. So sincere, thank you.
Can I just say something in relation to that? Not to take up, as I know there's other things going on, but UW Madison did a study, I think three years ago, of what are people looking for when they move to these micropolitain cities, which is the population that we fall into. Number one was close, the proximity to good healthcare. Second was good schools. Number three was outdoor recreation, so.
I've heard it's number three as well. Thank you. George?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Eric, and your group of volunteers for your time and for your leadership and putting all this together. When you and I first met and you told me, we had a good time. You know, you told me about your projects and things. And I knew then that you were sincere and you were committed. And yeah, thank you for making things go like you do and all of your volunteers. And as we talk about like maybe twenty years ago, twenty-one years ago, we really never focused on a lot of outdoor recreation things. It started coming around here probably the last seven, eight years. And with your leadership and in your group, you've definitely taken it to the next level and thank you, so.
It's not, I mean, I'm just a small part. There's a ton of other people there working harder, if not as hard.
Thank you to all of yous.
Thanks again, Eric, appreciate it. And thank you for all the work for the Recreation Alliance of Winona and for the update.
And moving on to new business, item five point one, twenty twenty-two Minnesota City Participation Program.
Motion to approve the attached resolution.
I would second that.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Pam. Any discussion? George?
Yes, can Nick touch on this a little bit? I'd hate to have you come to the meeting, Nick, and then we don't call on you.
Mayor, Council, thank you. This program is funded through Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. And the city of Winona does have the opportunity, again, to apply for an allocation of funds for low to moderate income households that based on their incomes, household size of income, they can receive down payment and closing cost assistance, which is usually the largest barrier to homeownership. Believe the city has been involved in this program since about twenty fifteen. And in the last three years in particular, we've gone from maybe utilizing the funds for six to eight households. Now this year just up to the thirty-two, which overall with the housing market with wages where, where they're at and increase of home prices, it's kind of good that we do have this program for people wanting to move to Winona.
Absolutely, and this is for first-time home buyers, correct?
That is correct. First-time home buyers, they do have an additional side program that is used for second-time homeowners.
Very good.
By Minnesota Housing's definition.
Okay. Any other questions, George?
Yeah, thank you, Nick. And like I said, this has been a very successful program here in Winona since we've been getting involved in it. And I've noticed the price of the homes is rising as are the income limits. So it's good to see it. And a lot of people in town here, I know from the fourth ward, they have benefited very much by these programs. So thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Any other questions or comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is the certification of completion, final estimate and resolution of acceptance for the twenty twenty-one Bituminus Mellon overlay.
Motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Eileen, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three is the Sioux Street Construction Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate.
Motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point four is the Certification of Completion, Final Estimate and Resolution of Acceptance for the Crooked, Crooked Slough Levy Drainage Improvements.
I move to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Erin. Any discussion?
Yeah, Brian, can you just touch on this project just a little bit as to what all went on?
Here in Council, this was the culvert lining that was promised with the levy certification process. Between Olmsted Pump Station and Prairie Island Road, there's about six culverts or corrugated metal pipe. And we lined them with the polyurethane to make sure that they, your road stays in place and the dike doesn't fall in.
Thank you, good project.
That was why the road was shut down for quite a chunk this summer.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Bren. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point five is the Airport Snow Removal Equipment Building Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate.
Motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point six is the State Urban Forest Resilience Grant Acceptance.
I would motion for the mayor and the clerk to execute the agreement.
I would second that.
We have a motion from George, a second from Pam. John, would you like to speak to this real quick?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This grant opportunity would fund much of our tree planting this upcoming spring. It's a grant that we're one of, I think, twelve cities statewide that receive these funds. And yeah, we'll be able to do probably a record level of planting for us. We accept the grant.
How did we decide on the, how we were going to divide up where the trees were going to go?
Well, our, part of it is our capacity to plant trees using our city staff. So we didn't want to take on more trees than we could really care for and find locations for. And we know that our, our friends at Prairie Island are very interested in kind of reforesting. They, they lost about three hundred ash trees due to attrition of emerald ash for in the last decade. So they've, they've been doing a lot of planting and have a capacity to do more. So that's, that's part of the reason they're going to, that's getting a large, large part of that allotment. But there are other partners, I think, like Westfield Golf Course expressed interest. Potentially some of the other schools in town would be open to adding some trees. So trying to spread it out to, to public entities and we're with a lot of public benefit.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any other questions for John? Thanks again, appreciate it, good work. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the Resolution to Certified Polling Places for the twenty twenty-two elections.
I would motion to approve the attached resolution certifying the places.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some passes.
Item five point eight is the Platte Review for the Winona Mall Subdivision.
I would motion to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from George, a second from Pam. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point nine is the Alternative Response Team Agreement Termination.
I would motion to direct the staff to terminate the agreement and also put the alternative response team back in the draft budget for twenty twenty-three.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Eileen, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Go ahead, Eileen.
I just want to thank everyone who was involved in the development of these positions. George, George and I served on the committee along with Jay Rasterson from the Police Department, some folks from Hiawatha Valley, the Advocacy Center of the county. There were a lot of people involved in developing these positions. And I know that these will be a benefit to the city. Part of the reason we're terminating this is because like pretty much everywhere across the country, it was incredibly difficult to hire. So we weren't able to fill both of these positions and this is supposed to work as a team. So I think that considering the budget constraints we're under, it makes sense not to budget for this for twenty twenty-two, especially when we're having to eliminate other positions. It doesn't make sense to me to hold a position open when there's not the people in it. But I think that this is of vital importance to our community. And so I would really like to see a commitment that it's at least included in the draft budget next year.
Very good. Thank you, Eileen.
George?
Yes, I, I agree with disposition. As the policing begins to move forward, I really think that, you know, two members of, of this particular ART team, I believe, need to be involved. I think it's a thing that's coming with police departments. They're currently in a lot of large cities and I do, I do support these positions. I hope we can find a way to put them in next year. I hope we can, but I know these positions that they're important. And you know, they're not police officers. They just work things that are more or less not police-related. But you know, police may first go with them and then turn it over to them. But I agree with Eileen, these, these positions are, are very much important and it's going to be a, a big development, police departments as we move forward, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, George. This past Friday, I was lucky enough to be invited to a mayor's group in Rochester. We had about thirty or forty mayors there. And one topic of discussion was our alternative response team. And being that we're one of the smaller communities in Minnesota, I found it extremely interesting that larger cities were modeling and or looking at similar programs for this year. While it is extremely difficult for me to terminate it at this time, I would like to mirror what Eileen had said. And also I think we need to reiterate that this is a pause. It is not necessarily an end to this type of a program. And I think we need to continue to move forward on this in, in years to come. So thank you again for everyone who did help put the ART together. I know that there was a lot of work that was put into that and I am fully supportive of it when the time is right. So again, thank you. Pam?
Yes, I, I would also like to see us not be passive in developments in this field. So I would like to direct city staff to keep their eyes open for new innovative ways of accomplishing these goals with extra staff. So just keep, keep our eyes open and keep working on it.
Absolutely. Any other comments or discussion? George?
Yeah, just like Chief Williams says that, you know, we're, we're pushing to pause button for now. And I can't see Eileen, I know she's over there, but what do we meet? Four months?
What's that? Yeah.
Four months, I think we probably met on this, I think, once a week, whatever. And there was a, you know, a lot accomplished and that was really a good group of people from a, a good background of everyone. So, and we were able to come up with this, this model, so.
I, I think it's a great foundation for a program like this and, and it gives us something to, it, it's an opportunity for us to. And, and it gives us something to, it, it's an opportunity for us to make it better next time around, so.
And as the chief mentioned, that, you know, the groundwork, the foundation is laid. Now we just need to get the people that are going to uh, be able to work in it, so.
Absolutely. Aaron, did you add something? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item 5.10 is the amended and restated license agreement for the Hempker property.
Motion to direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Just for clarity, this is the Adina Realty Property, gaining access to Sugarloaf. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is Council Concerns.
We'll start with Council Member Borzkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, can you just give a quick update with the Shive Road project down there? A lot of trees were cut, a lot of the trees in the water. And what's the whole deal behind all that?
Sure, George. Mayor and Council, they, we have a sewer, a sanitary sewer, a forest main. And obviously that's the outlet for the lake. So with a lot of them trees falling into the creek, we got, got them all up the shoreline. We do have easements all through there. So it was something, it probably something that should have been done 20, 20 years ago. But uh, we took care of it just so we could have access to our sewer lines and the creek. There are some branches that you mentioned to me earlier today that fell in. We fished as well as we could. We, those are probably going to float down towards the treatment plant, we'll pull them out then.
Then I also noticed part of the road, it seems like the, um, the curb of it is beginning to wash down.
Yep, we're, we're looking at probably doing like a hydro seat at both the banks next spring. If we put it in now, it'd be just like throwing money in that creek. It, it wouldn't take at all right now because stuff's frozen. So we'll look at doing something next spring for stabilizing those banks.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I'd also just like to inform council tonight that at our last HRA meeting, our current executive director is retiring at the end of the year. And by unanimous vote of the board, we have voted to approve Tina Schott to go from assistant director to director. And she will be assuming that position January 1st, as Linda will be done here at the end of December. So uh, it's a good transition. She's knowledgeable of the business and we're looking forward to working with her. It was an in-house, uh, in-house promotion, so look forward to that. And also I'd just like to offer sympathy to a couple of families. First, to the Bob Schultz family. Bob, a longtime fourth ward resident, served honorably in the Navy, serving our country. And to his daughters and grandchildren, great grandchildren, condolences on the passing of, of Robert. He was a very, very good man and very proud of the city and very proud of his military background. And also the Trappell family and the passing of uh, mother and grandmother Janice. Janice was one of the first daycare operators in our city many, many years ago. And then her, uh, few of her daughters followed in their footsteps. So condolences to the Trappell family and to their children and grandchildren. And we keep both families in mind as they begin their healing process. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Ayden?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Councilmember Young? Did you get a run in today?
No, I'm scared.
Okay. Even better. All right. Councilmember Rupinski?
Uh, nothing, Mayor. Just want to say congratulations to my son, River, for passing his driver's ed test today. And I got his license, so look out, Winona, we have another new driver.
Got another ripper on the road.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And on the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from November 15th and an ordinance to update the storm sewer fees.
To approve, uh, so moved. Both of those things.
Motion from Eileen, second from Steve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Being 7:25, I move that we adjourn the council meeting.
Second.
Motion from George, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Just kidding. Meeting adjourned.